Let's go ahead and get started with the 440 Council Work Session, please. Madam Clerk, read the roll.
It's Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Most of the agenda is proposed.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Today, we're going to discuss the special events ordinance that Director Trelka has presented to us. Dan, go ahead, please.
Well, during our budget discussions, I was directed to come up with a special events ordinance. So this is a template of what I came up with. Suzie and I worked together on this. Dan Trelka, Director of Safety Services, for the record. We found that many, many cities utilize a process such as this. The variables of the process are all over the board. I hope, does everybody have a draft of the ordinance? I've already tweaked it a little since you were provided with this draft, but not much. And some other discussions have come up in the meantime. But one thing, the mayor's office apparently has been getting calls about the fee. We can do whatever the council wants. We don't have to have a fee. But I wanted to keep it very simple, yet workable. As it stands right now, we have people who, some people will approach the police department to initiate a special events process. Some will approach the mayor's office, some will approach the city clerk's office. We want, we wanted our point of contact to be the city clerk's office, and then from there, we would take it. I considered triggering events, as you can see by the ordinance, one of the triggering events that I have, and that's all over the board throughout different communities as well, throughout the country. I felt that for our community, seventy-five people would be the first triggering event. Are you going to have seventy-five people at this particular event? Then comes into play the street closures and the service of alcohol and any other components that involve a number of city departments. This is simply a template I'm giving you so that we can have discussion. I, I'm not looking to, you know, I don't think this is something we should institute right away. I was approached by Mr. Buza today, and he'd like to have discussions with their group about this as well. My line of thought was May 1st of 2015, so that we can give this plenty of time to evolve and change if it needs to be. And then I bring it back to the city council and ultimately get it approved as an ordinance. Because this is, this, some people are uncomfortable with this process, so we want to do all we can to have buy-in from the people that are going to be the most impacted, so we can ultimately end up with a good product. So I'm here to answer questions, take suggestions, and make some more adjustments to this ordinance if so desired.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Has everybody had a chance to read what Dan has submitted?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Walper. Dan, I, I thought probably the main purpose for having this ordinance was to help offset the costs of providing additional public safety beyond the normal workday of a police officer.
It is. It is.
So why would we not, why would we not have a fee, then?
Well, the fee, Ron, is, is, what I'm addressing, or what I asked Dan about, is addressed in item number B, and that's the fee, the twenty-five dollar fee to fill out a request for a license. I've gotten two calls on that, only two, I understand that, but it does appear, and I tend to agree somewhat, that, I mean, why do we need to charge a fee? If somebody wants to have an event, let's let them have the event. Let's take their application, let's vet the application, see what it is. But I don't know that I support, I don't support charging a fee for doing that. And that's just my opinion based on a couple of calls and my opinion. So, but again, it's, you know, it's open for conversation.
But again, I thought that was the purpose of this, was to...
There will be a fee for, provided, let's say, if somebody wants two police officers for ten hours, there would be a cost associated with that.
Okay.
And another thing, another reason why we want this ordinance is we're seeing more and more of these special events in Waterloo, which is fantastic. In a way, we would, we would just like to be aware of them, and to have the central clearinghouse be the city clerk's office, we immediately become aware of them, so that we know they're going on in our community.
Another question. Since more event, most events bring in a revenue, I'm on the Fourth Street Cruise Committee, for example. There is no money with the Fourth Street Cruise. It's a volunteer parade of your, of your cars. So that, we're not bringing in any money to pay the twenty-five or the twenty-five dollars fee for that day. So what do you do in a situation like that?
That's...
You were just lobbying to have the fee. Now you're lobbying not to have the fee.
No, no, I'm just asking the question.
I'm confused.
Yeah, but I'm saying, okay, if you're, most events bring in money. There's a, there's a fee for your event. The Fourth Street Cruise doesn't have a fee.
But when you're saying bring in money, bring in money to who?
To cover the costs of providing police protection.
Well, but doesn't, and I don't know, but doesn't the money that comes in on those events, doesn't that go to the event sponsors? Right?
I think what you're trying to distinguish is for-profit and nonprofit. Events. So some actually make a profit and can pay for the extra cops and street closures and that sort of stuff. And then we also have those events that are not, not-for-profit and are not making a profit by whatever the event is. And as of right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but this doesn't distinguish between the two.
No, it does not. No.
Would that be a possibility, Dan, to distinguish between for-profit and a nonprofit entity that was trying to get an event going?
You know, we had considered that as we were coming up with the ordinance, but we wanted to keep it simple, and fairness is a matter of perception. I mean, if you're drawing police resources for your event, there's really no distinction between profit and nonprofit.
Right. And don't, even the nonprofit, they have a budget. I mean, the Fourth Street Cruise have to have a budget that they work with to do all the things that they do, for advertising and t-shirts and what, all the vendors, don't they pay a fee?
That's what I was going to ask, is...
To, to the Fourth Street Cruise in order to be downtown?
They do not pay it to the Fourth Street Cruise Committee. The, the radio station picks up some of the tab for, for the event, but the Fourth Street Cruise Committee itself doesn't generate any money.
I don't know how you, okay. I just, it seems like, how, how would you put an event like that on without having a budget, having a budget? I don't know.
Because all they, all they do is drive on the streets, that's...
What would they, okay. They do advertising and, well, okay.
Again, the radio station is doing this.
Okay.
Director Trelka.
Yes, sir.
Who is going to create the matrix, or whatever you're going to have, to determine how many police, you know, to do the security plan? Is it the city clerk, or your...
No, it would be our department. How this whole thing would work is the event would apply through the city clerk's office, and Suzie would determine which departments this would involve. And, and then a good example of when we could have a meeting is every Monday morning at nine o'clock in the morning, we have a department head meeting. After the meeting, Suzie could say, hey, police department, there's an event coming up on, on cer, a certain day, let's sit down and, and make you aware, we'll make you aware of what the event is. And at the police department, it would go to Captain Leibold. And Captain Leibold would then establish a dialogue with the event organizer, and they would determine what is needed, for how long. We have a general policy at the police department, is we'll give you one cop for one hour, no problem. But if it gets to be more than that, like, we had an event this past summer where they wanted two police officers for about ten hours for an event. And the agreement we came to them is, okay, we're not going to charge you more than a thousand dollars, but you're going to have to pay for those officers. And that worked out very well. This process is simply formalizing some of the fees we've already been charging.
Well, it'd be nice if everybody knew what the rules were.
Right. Knew upfront.
Then nobody thinks you're taking care of Irish Fest and not Fourth Street Cruise.
And if the council, you know, and, one thing I've heard even from our more, our more veteran officers is saying, well, wait a minute, the police department should be providing these services, because these services are bringing revenue to the city and such. It's not like, if the council will allow the police department anyway, and the fire department, it's not like we're going to dump all the costs on them, just the personnel cost. The city's contribution, let's say, let's say they want two officers, and, and they'd like to have two squad cars there for the officers. We expect them to pay the personnel cost, we'll throw in a car and gas, if the city, if the council allows me to do that. Because, as you know, the biggest cost for the services we provide are personnel costs. And there's even variations, at least for the police department, in, in the cost of those services. For decades, events and organizations have been contracting directly with police officers, with the officer, not the organization. That generally runs thirty-five bucks an hour. If you want to contract through the city, it runs based on what the officer's making, because more senior officers make more money than junior officers by contract. With time and a half, it could, it could cost the event fifty dollars per hour for the officer. But if you, if you contract with the city, you're guaranteed to have an officer there, because we can order an officer to work it. If you're contracting directly with an officer and the officer's sign up for it, we can't make anybody be there. There's some events officers don't like. If Miley Cyrus came to town, the cops don't want to work it. So...
Oh, never mind. Me and you, me and you, Dan.
For, for an event such as that, you, the event would be, and that'll be explained to him by Captain Leibold, the event would be better off contracting through the city for a higher fee, because then we have the ability to make sure officers are there to cover the event.
I, I think, if I may, just interject something. The intent is obviously, I mean, it's, it's no more apparent than it is right now with what we're going to have been speaking about tonight. Police overtime is, is an incredible burden to us. And a degree of police overtime is generated through these special events. Not all of it, certainly, but a degree of it is. And so what we're trying to do is just recoup that amount of overtime that's generated by special events. And no more than that. And we don't want to make money on this by any stretch of the imagination, but we, we do feel like we have to try to do something to not have special events cost the city something. But on the other hand, we have some great events downtown, and we don't want this to be that one male in the coffin that's going to break an event and keep them from having it either. So it's, it's a conundrum, as they say. Ms. Cole.
Do I understand that we're talking about twenty-five dollars breaking an event?
No, 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 no. I was, no...
It would be the cost of, the actual cost of security.
Yeah. Well, of the, of the license or whatever, and to me, that was just a principle thing. Why would we charge somebody twenty-five bucks? I mean, to me, it was just, but, again, it's council...
Director Trelka.
Mr. Morrissey.
Director Trelka, does this apply to just events that are in Waterloo?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so what, like bicyclists will be having different rides, but they'll be using the bicycle paths in Waterloo to go through, is, that, does that mean that those organizations would need to get a license for going through Waterloo on the paths, or not?
Yes.
They would?
Any portion of the event in our corporate city limits, yes.
Even though the event was in another town, two other towns' destination points, but we were going through Waterloo?
Correct. But even if, if they don't require any of our services, they won't be charged for those, for services they don't need. If they don't need a cop, we're not going to charge them for it.
It would just be simply filling out the application, so we're aware of it and know that it's coming through town, then. There'd be no fee, but they would just fill it out to know that we're going to have a large population coming through town, and we can be prepared.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Schmidt.
So going back to Mr. Walper's comment, and I guess that's kind of where my head was at, too. I thought what we were going to talk about is a way to recoup the overtime. But what this is, is basically an item, mentioning item C, that could be part of that, correct? But so this would just be a, a set fee that we're going to get for every event, the licensing part.
The original one, but as Dan talked about, mayor's office has recommended that that portion be taken out, the twenty-five or thirty-five dollar fee, and simply just do it based on cost, which is later in the ordinance that says that...
And it covers every department. C covers security, so it covers police. But D would cover absolutely any department in the city, fire department, street department, assigned department.
Which does happen. We have certain events that require us to call electricians in and that sort of thing to get it all set up, and sometimes it's after hours, so there's overtime required there. There's, street department, obviously, is a lot of times required to go take barricades out and that sort of stuff.
And Dan, you had mentioned something about some known objections or some known issues. Would you like to share those with us, just so we are aware of them? Or are there any that you haven't already talked about?
I don't believe so, no. No, there's, there's opinions, I've been given plenty of opinions on this, from elected officials, from citizens, from employees. I came forward with something straightforward and simple, and you're the sausage maker.
Thank you, Dan.
You tell me how to make it, I'll make it.
Were we going to have Mr. Buza share his thoughts, or is that...
Let me, let me say one more thing. There, there was one more item that, that I kind of wanted, and I talked to Dan earlier about this today, is I didn't want to get in a situation where we were dictating to an event that they had to have X, X number of cops. I don't want us to tell, everybody always use Irish Fest, I don't want us to tell Irish Fest that they have to have ten cops on Saturday night. That should be up to the event. And it should be up to the event, I believe, whether or not they want to hire a couple of cops, or whether they want to hire permare security, or whether they want to do this or that. But if they request police officers, then they should pay for them. That was kind of my crux of the thing.
And this allows that. And there's dialogue. There's dialogue between every department and every event, if it involves that department. So there's no surprises on cost. No, no event organizer should come here and say, well, I was surprised by that nine-hundred-dollar bill, because it'll be fully talked about.
But for clarification, the police department can require security. It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be a cop. They could choose permare, that sort of stuff. For instance, Irish Fest, or one of the big festivals, obviously, we don't want large events like that saying, we're just not going to do any security. So the police department could still dictate that, and they can judge how to do it.
I don't, I don't like the word dictate or require. I like the word suggest, but...
Diplomacy.
There you go. Propose, yeah, another good word. But Dan has done what we have asked him to do. He put something together, and it's now in front of us to, to chew on, and if you want to give it a couple of weeks, I mean, this isn't going to go until next year, anyway. But we've got this on the table, and Dan has presented something, and we can have much more conversation now, or we can take a look at this and come up with your own ideas, and we can talk about it again in a couple of weeks or so.
Director Trelka, would an event like Friday Lou, all the Friday Lou's, would that fit into this, or, or not?
Yes, they'd have to apply, and we'd have to see what their needs are, and...
Thank you.
That's rela, that, that event is relatively problem-free. And that plays into it. Past history of an event plays into what may be required in the future.
So what if there are events like that, but there's organizations within that event that are separate from, like Friday Lou, that are going to be part of it? Would they have to get a separate license?
No, I would say no, and we described it, because it's just one license, one permit for one event.
Okay.
Aaron, do you want to address any of our comments so far?
Aaron was at Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau. I guess my comments that I made to Director Trelka, wouldn't, I wouldn't even call them concerns, more just some clarifications. If it's an event on private property versus an event on public property, does that do any, or is that any different? If it's a multiple-site event, is that something, I, I just had a couple of questions asked of me today, and I didn't know the answer. And I also offered my assistance or our assistance, because we're also involved in a, in another conversation with a group of trail users, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, bureaus, some private businesses, to kind of set up similar guidelines and applications for trail events. They're asking for a one-dollar-per-person fee, so twenty-five dollars in the application doesn't necessarily seem out of, out of the line. But again, it's just a matter of vetting those events and helping guide them to the right city services, helping guide them to the right places for the correct permits, to, to make sure that the events go off without a hitch. And unfortunately, we see enough events that are doomed from the start, and, because they haven't really thought everything through. This, I think, helps, because it points them in the right direction for the right people to ask the right questions.
Good.
So, not concerns, just more questions and, and offers of support.
Well, we certainly all want to continue having events, and we want the events to be safe, but we also have to come up with creative ways to address our costs, and this is one. Why don't we, again, take this into consideration? All of you look at this, maybe take notes or write some stuff down, and let's plan on talking about this again in the, in the future. Dan, is that okay with everybody?
Just, well, just one more comment. We're talking about the multi-events from May 1st till April 31st. The Fourth Street Cruise Committee, Main Street handles the vendors, so if they're applying for a license for the Friday Lou's, they also could include the Fourth Street Cruise, so that answers that.
Yes, they could.
A central clearinghouse for these would be incredibly positive.
Ron, we hope that the cruise never takes place on April 31st.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Let me know when you're ready, Suzie.
One way to find out.
That's really nice.
Oh, I love that.
You have done that, see, I've heard a bunch of people say, we're not going here.
Oh, good lord. I can do fifteen minutes and I'm dying. Like, I, I literally feel like I went to Jell-O and can't go in. There's no way. This step thing?
My brother just sold a seventy-two Lotus Elan fixed tank. About for forty-seven hundred bucks from the factory.
I can get to about fifteen minutes and then I'm...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
I can get to about fifteen minutes and then I'm...
Good evening.
Oh, good lord. I can do fifteen minutes and I'm dying. Like, I, I literally feel like I went to Jell-O and can't go in. There's no way. This step thing?
My brother just sold a seventy-two Lotus Elan fixed tank. About for forty-seven hundred bucks from the factory.
I can get to about fifteen minutes and then I'm...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our new home here at the Art Center. It's our regularly scheduled Monday City Council meeting, Waterloo City Council meeting for this March 3rd, 2014. It certainly doesn't feel or look like March outside, but it is. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you very much. Our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is going to be led by Ms. Carolyn Cole, our award to councilperson. Carolyn, please.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I would like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is for the change, the action from acknowledgement of receipt to failure to pay penalty in 1.8.2. Also, to amend a request to table into March 24th, 2014, for the, for number one, the asbestos abatement services request. The next one is to delete resolution as contract bonds and certificates of insurance, because they have not been received, so delete item number two. And also, on the regular agenda, add a motion approving change order number one for net increase in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty thousand for work performed by J.M.K. Contracting of Ames, Iowa, for the number, no name, Creek Interceptor Sewer, contract number 849, due to unforeseen discovery of bedrock where contractor was going to bore, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of February 24th.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? I will add that the item number nineteen, the additional item that was just put on, it was just put on late today, is an emergency situation where we have a contractor on site that is doing some boring. They ran into a heavy dose of bedrock, and they have made a request to change from boring to trenching, to put this tile in, and they, they couldn't wait for another week for the council to act on this. They're there, they're wanting to continue the work, so we added this at the last minute. That's why we have, it, it is an emergency, we do need to act on it to approve it, so that's item number nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, also, I think that the addition is still under the next bid as well.
Yes, yeah, considerably.
We're still under that bid, yeah.
So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start tonight with one of our favorite things that we do once a year, is welcome Mike Mancina up to the front. Mike's going to, has a gift for us, I believe, for our Trees Please program. Let's go up to the front here, Mike. Thank you, as always. And, and we have a new gentleman, Chuck Meyer, and I'll, I'll let you introduce him, and then we have Paul Hudding, and I'm going to give you a microphone, Mike, which is right there. So go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is, for 2014, Mid-American is going ahead and set aside $219,000 for seventy-five communities and organizations that plant trees throughout the state of Iowa. And tonight, I'm here to present to the city of Waterloo a check for $20,000, which is a portion of that. And also, as I've indicated to you before, after about twenty-five years of working for Mid-American Energy and serving the city of Waterloo, I am going to be retiring in April 11th, and this is my replacement, Chuck Meyer. So I'd like to introduce Chuck to everyone here, and we will be making the rounds with business cards, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Well, you know, Mike, I have gotten to know you over the past four and a half years, and I, I can't tell you how much you're going to be missed. Quite honestly, ladies and gentlemen, when we have questions or issues or whatever with Mid-American, Mike is the government liaison, and I've called Mike many, many times, and his response is always immediate and very positive, and there hasn't been a question to date that you haven't been able to answer for us. You've been an incredible help, an incredible asset to Mid-American and to the city, so we're going to miss you, but we're going to wish you very well. So, have, have a great time.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and Chuck, welcome aboard. You've got your work cut out for you.
Sounds like I do.
Yes, you have big, big shoes to fill. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B11. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $609,571.10. Six zero nine comma five seven one point one zero.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, that's a roll call. Please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yeah.
Very good. That motion carries. So if I'm reading through the amendments right, we're going to start with 1A2, is that correct, Madam Clerk, I believe?
No.
That was changing that to that?
That was in the consent.
So, starting with... with 1A2, is that correct, Madam Clerk, I believe?
No.
That was changing that to that?
That was in the consent.
So, what are we doing? We're starting, right?
Going to item two.
Item three.
Well, number two is deleting, so we're going to number three.
Item three. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was going to just mention, I'm not sure if he's here, but Mr. Haskins, I don't know if you-
Oh, yeah, Barry Haskins.
We're actually doing that. We're in public here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Barry Haskins, Barry, are you here? I don't think so. But Barry Haskins, we want to welcome him to our Civil Service Commission, who is, was appointed today, and again, it's just another volunteer position that somebody has stepped up and agreed to give of their time and talents to our many boards and commissions. So, Barry, if you're watching out there, thank you very much, much appreciated.
It's thick here, and we're going to open it in nine seconds.
Okay. Does somebody know what we're doing on item number one?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the asbestos abatement services request for proposals for the following properties: 134 Dearborn Avenue, 928 Mulberry Street, 7217 Benton Street, 927 Mullen Avenue, 67 Franklin Street, 820 Fowler Street, 409 State Street, 520 Cottage Street, 1013 Lincoln Street, 420 Dawson Street, and 801 and 805 Commercial Street.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections to item number one on file?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone hearing until March 24, 2014.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, so we're, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
We'll start with item number three now.
Item number three, let's do three, four, five, please.
Item number three is adopting a resolution approving a five-year beverage sales agreement with Pepsi Beverages Company for leisure service locations, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item four is adopting a resolution approving an agreement with Accelerated Rehabilitation Center for services to be offered at the Sea Valley Sports Flex, and item number five is adopting a resolution approving the writing, preparation, and submittal of an Iowa Reinvestment Act application for the Tech Works Campus Area Development Project, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding three, four, or five? Anyone? Madam Clerk, those are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number eleven. Mr. Hart.
Move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time an ordinance repealing Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulation enacted in lieu thereof, a new Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulation, for an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, by amending the Section Six of Chapter Two, nuisances of Title Four Public Health and Safety, and by amending Sections Two, Three, Five, Six, and Eight, and Ten of Chapter Three, solid waste collection and disposal of Title Four Public Health and Safety. That's in regards to an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, by amending Sections Six of Chapter Two, nuisances of Title Four Public Health and Safety, and by amending Sections Two, Three, Five, Six, and Eight, and Ten of Chapter Three, solid waste collection and disposal of Title Four Public Health and Safety, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments or comments regarding item eleven? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number eleven. Mr. Hart.
Move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time an ordinance repealing Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulation, enacting in lieu thereof, a new Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulation, for an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, by repealing Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulations, and enacting in lieu thereof, a new Chapter One Animal Control of Title V Police Regulations, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding item eleven? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move, this is in the rules.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, we'll take it up for the last time next week. Item number twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number twelve, I'd like to make the motion, receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and that's, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to instruct Leisure Services Director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and that's for the fiscal year 2014, boathouse roof replacement project.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding fixing the roof of the boathouse?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I've heard in the audience, I did just want to mention this is an insurance issue, people were kind of wondering how building that new, and so I did want to just make everybody aware of the fact that it is a hail-related issue.
Hail damage, and the insurance is paying for it.
Correct.
Further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, then receive and file plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
That's a motion.
I'm sorry, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That is it. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
We can take those jointly also, I believe. Let's do thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, please, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve change order number one for net decrease in the amount of eight-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents for work performed by Electronics Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota, for the Young Arena Video-Audio Upgrade Project, and authorize mayor to execute said document. In fourteen, I move to approve change order number three for net increase in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for work performed by K&W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the rehabilitation of the airfield fault project for a quantity adjustment on the surface-applied hold-position signs and airfield lighting control modifications, and authorize mayor to execute said document. In number fifteen, I move to approve change order number four for net increase in the amount of five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for work performed by K&W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the rehabilitation of airfield fault project for Livingston Aviation Parking Lot Lighting, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And sixteen, I move to approve change order number two for net decrease of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents for work performed by Aspro, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, for rehabilitation of taxiway E at the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And in seventeen, I move to approve change order number one for net increase of thirteen-thousand four-hundred-and-forty dollars for work performed by Cedar Valley Corp., LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for rehabilitation of taxiway B at Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Very good, there's a motion and second on those last, last six issues, actually. Counsel, do you have, I'm sorry, last five issues, do you have any questions or comments? They're all change orders, some up and some down. Does anybody have any questions on any of those at all? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, the motion's carry. Item number eighteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number eighteen, I'd like to make the motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2015 budget.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open for the 2015 budget. We're going to start tonight by asking our Chief Financial Officer, Michelle Wiedner, to give us her always interesting and informative presentation on the budget.
Just for the record, there were comments on file.
Oh, I'm sorry, there, yes, there are several comments on file. My mistake, thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have one more, Michelle?
I do not, so there isn't one for Suzy yet.
Okay.
I did not have enough, there should be eight, there should be enough for all the council and the mayor.
Okay.
And I apologize, but they're hot off the printer, and they're just a time different Are we ready?
Very good, the floor is yours, Michelle.
Well, I have to figure out if I can make this fancy stuff work, so, well, there we go. I'd like to start out, and counsel, I don't know if you have a hard copy, but there is a screen immediately behind you as well. For the reason that we're all here tonight, our mission, to effectively and efficiently use the various resources of city government in order to help make Waterloo the best possible place to live, to work, to do business, to play, and to raise a family for all our citizens. And I think that's a good reminder of all the needs that we're trying to balance as we set our budget. Our top strategic priorities, which I just raised right ahead, there we go, are to support economic development, such as jobs, investment, reduce taxes, to implement the downtown redevelopment master plan, which I think it's exciting to be over here tonight because we have an opportunity to see a lot of the pieces of that plan, to improve our housing stock, to include things such as variety, quality, and cost, and I think we've heard lots of good news about new developments in that front, to improve our service delivery, and enhance intergovernmental cooperation, and also to continue to collaborate with our statewide elected officials to reduce the burden on local property taxes, address our workforce needs, and that would include things such as attracting workers, retention, and training to ensure safe neighborhoods and to enhance our quality of life. We currently employ approximately five-hundred-and-sixteen full-time equivalent employees, particularly in the warmer months, we have a number of seasonal employees that will make that number grow. We are budgeted to have just under five-hundred-and-forty-eight FTEs, but at any given time, there are some vacancies in the process of being filled. And that is in all funds, not just the general fund, so some of those would be funded with property taxes in a number of different ways. I'm often asked, where does a general property tax dollar go? How do we use it? And seventy-eight percent of that general tax dollar goes for public safety budgets. That would include police activities, fire activities, and building inspection. Building inspection actually returns money to the general fund, so it reduces that cost. Our next largest category is sixteen percent, and that would be our culture and arts, library, leisure services, all the quality-of-life activities that we do. And that is about five million dollars that we would, that we invest in that. We have one percent for both planning activities, economic development, and also one percent for human rights, four percent for what we could call our public works, that includes economic development, whoops, I'm sorry, the airport, the met bus service, parking activities. I think I've covered all of them. The zero that's showing up on there is for administration and city facilities, and that's because there is actually a net return to the general fund because of the way revenue is recorded in the clerk finance office. How do we spend our money? Again, seventy-eight percent of that is spent on personnel, that would include benefit costs. So, we're often told that we're threatening the public because we always say we're going to lay off people when we need to cut the budget, but I want to remind us all, it's not that we are trying to threaten you with that, it's that our budget is seventy-eight percent people, and we are very limited as to what else we can change. The commodities cost on here is six percent, that includes things such as fuel, parts, things like that, that you just, supplies, things you have to have to operate a department. The contracted services cost, which is fifteen percent of our budget, covers things such as consolidated dispatch and utilities, other things like that. Then you can see there's one percent for miscellaneous other types of costs. I'm going to fairly quickly try to go, whoops, go through our other funds. How are debt service funds used? We will spend a total of about fourteen-point-eight million on debt service in fiscal 15, eleven-point-seven million of that will be principal payments on our geo-bonds, those are principal payments on the mortgage, basically, for all the activities that the city does. We will spend about three million dollars on interest, eighty-six thousand dollars on debt for Ridgeway Towers, which is funded by a grant from the federal government, so that's kind of an in and out, and then fifty-one thousand for administration fees. It's often a perception that your property tax dollar pays for everything that the city does, and actually, it's surprising that property taxes only pay for twenty-nine percent of our budget. This chart shows all the various revenues that we have, TIF revenues of five percent, our debt proceeds, which is the bond issue we plan to do every year, of about eight percent, charges for services, seventeen percent, state and local funds, and the new replacement funds for the corporate rollback is included in that, eight percent, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Federal funds, about sixteen percent. Interest revenue keeps declining, that's about at one percent right now. Licenses and permits at one percent. And other city taxes, which would include hotel motel taxes and gaming revenues, are about eleven percent of our budget. It's often a misperception that the city is, uses all your property tax dollar when you pay that bill at the county treasurer, but that's not the case. You pay, whoops, there we go, forty-three cents of every dollar comes to the city of Waterloo. Fifteen percent goes to Black Hawk County. About thirty-eight cents goes to the Waterloo schools. And the other three cents goes to things like the county assessor and some other very small state activities. So, less than half is coming to the city, but we are the largest user. Property taxes, as we all know, is an important source of revenue, that twenty-nine percent we talked about earlier. This chart shows what's happening with the growth in our total valuation of property. And actually, we're seeing a reduction for fiscal fifteen of a hundred and twenty-four million in our total assessed value. If you've been watching us at all, we've been talking about that. The assessor determined that sales prices were lower over the last two years and revalued individual properties this year, and the total for that is a hundred and twenty-four million. Our taxable reduction is a hundred, about a hundred and five million. That's lower because our residential properties, something called the rollback factor was increased this year by the state by three percent. So, our residential properties will, even if everything remained the same, and we collected the same number of property tax dollars, our residential properties would pay three percent more, and our commercial and industrial properties would actually pay, it's about an eight percent difference there because they're getting a rollback of five percent, while residential is getting increased by three percent. You can see our TIF, our TIFs are up a little bit this year, about twenty-four million. So, we have a three point two percent reduction in our total assessed value and four, nearly four and a half percent reduction in our taxable value for fiscal fifteen, which is causing a bit of a strain in determining a budget. So, the property taxes that we're asking for at this time to support the fifteen budget, I have a comparison here of the current year and next year. We're actually projecting a reduction in property taxes of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's a decrease of zero point two six percent. The proposed levy rate is an increase to eighteen dollars, twenty-one point eight 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 cents. And that results, this is complicated this year, and I probably should have put both these percentages on here. But for residential property, the assessor determined that our average of all residential properties, that there was a reduction of four percent. And later, we discovered that about fifty-five percent of our total residential properties had some kind of decrease. If you are one of the average properties that had a four percent reduction in value, then your increase in taxes from the city would be two point nine eight percent. If you had no change in your value, and we understand now that's about thirty-nine percent of our properties, you would have an increase of about seven point two seven percent. And that difference is strictly because of the fact that your property may or may not have changed value. Now, commercial and industrial properties have a reduction of one point oh six percent this year, and that is due to the rollback change. And they, they don't, they did not get revaluation changes, so that's pretty much just the change in the rollback factor. The next chart, we're often, I think it's a common assumption that our property taxes are going up at a rate far exceeding inflation. So, I've been tracking inflation and calculating the increase in our taxes each year to show that, and it is an interesting analysis. The two lines at the very bottom of this chart are residential properties. The bluish line is inflation adjusted, and the bottom line is our actual taxes. So, residential properties' actual taxes are staying very close, but slightly below inflation over this last ten, twelve years. The next two set of lines going up are for commercial properties, and the red line is actual taxes. The dark blue is the inflation adjusted. Again, you can see commercial taxes are now dropping below inflation. That was one category that we saw running slightly ahead of inflation for a while, but now that the state has put in the corporate rollback, that has dropped below inflation. But the property category that is the biggest winner in this is our industrial properties. Those are the two lines at the top that, and I'm sorry, it's very hard to see the green one on the screen, unfortunately, it's about halfway down. But that green is the actual taxes for industrial properties. The line at the top, the brownish-red color, is what would have happened to those taxes had they gone up at the rate of inflation. So, industrial taxes have not at all kept up with inflation. Commercial and residential have stayed slightly below inflation over time in Waterloo. I also wanted to very quickly maybe talk about our other funds. One of the largest we have is our sewer funds, which run our sewer plant. We plan to spend about sixteen point nine million dollars in fiscal fifteen. Of that, eight point three million will be used for plant and system operations, and there is some street repair, sewers under the street repairs included in that. Debt service for sewer system improvements will be about four point six million, and our bond issue will be about four million for sewer fees. I'm having trouble with this mouse. It doesn't work the direction I think it should. Stormwater fees, we are budgeting about one point eight million for stormwater fees. Nine hundred and fifty thousand of that, or fifty-two percent, will be used for system operations and maintenance. Eighteen percent will be used for street sweeping, about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And I get lots of questions about why we have street sweeping being paid for with stormwater fees. One of the requirements of our stormwater user permit that we have to get from the state is that we have to do street sweeping, and we also have to report on that annually. So, it felt very logical to have that street sweeping paid for with this fee, allows us to account for it and report on it to the state all in one package. And there will be amount for system improvements of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand left in that fund. The next fund I want to talk about is our garbage fund. We will plan to spend about three point nine million, and just over three million of that, or seventy-eight percent, will be spent on our garbage and yard waste disposal, recycling and neighborhood cleanups, four hundred and thirty-five thousand for equipment, and four hundred and forty-three thousand on code enforcement activities. Road use tax fund is another operating fund that we maintain at the city. That revenue comes from fuel taxes that we all pay at the pump. Out of those funds, we will pay about a million dollars for engineering for street and maintenance projects, five hundred and eighty thousand for forestry right-of-way operations. We're budgeting one point eight million dollars for snow removal, and just over two million dollars for street maintenance. And we move back and forth between maintenance and snow removal, depending on how much snow removal we have to do. One point four million will be spent on traffic operations, four hundred and fifty thousand on utilities, just to keep the street lights on, and forty-one thousand on utilities for traffic signals.
Michelle, would it be appropriate, just very quickly, to say where road use tax comes from?
Yes. Fuel taxes paid at the pump and flow, those are actually sent to the state, which are then returned to the city.
Thank you.
Yep. Local option taxes, and this revenue is the one, one percent that's added to your sales taxes and when you purchase things. We will spend eleven and a half million of that on street repairs and constructions, just about seven hundred thousand on engineering, and eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars on things such as crack sealing and also unimproved street repair. We're almost. Federal block grant funds, we will spend about three million dollars, two point three million of that directly on housing rehabilitation and construction, eight hundred and six thousand on administration, and eighty-five thousand dollars on our neighborhood services program. We also receive federal housing funds, and we will spend four point one million of that on housing assistance, about six hundred and fifty-six thousand on administration, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to operate our Ridgeway Towers senior housing, and hopefully have forty-five thousand dollars available for down payment assistance. Another major thing that the city does is capital projects. And we, we invest a lot of money in capital projects. This is mostly done with grants and bonds. This does not include the street repairs and improvements that we use a local option tax to do. So, we're projecting eight million dollar bond issue for a variety of things. And I don't think I'll go through all of them. You can see all the, the charts on here, but there are a number of different activities that we hope to get done with many, a number of grants and the bonds in two thousand fifteen. And that is my formal presentation for today, so thank you all. I especially want to thank the city council and mayor and my staff for all the hard work on the budget. It doesn't get easier, no matter how many years we do this, I don't think.
Thank you, Michelle. Counsel, does anyone have questions right now of Michelle at this point? There will certainly be time in the future. Nobody right now. Ladies and gentlemen, the hearing is now open, and for those of you that might wish to comment on our budget, although we haven't presented anything yet, but the floor is open, microphone is open, I would just ask you to please come to the microphone, give us your name and address. I try to limit your comments to three minutes, but the microphone is open for anybody that would like to have any comments about the budget.
Mayor, counsel, I appreciate this opportunity. I, Leon Mosley, from the Gates Park Neighborhood Association. And, you know, we set up a lot of associations in the city of Waterloo and outside the city of Waterloo. I read the article in the paper dealing with the police department. I am a strong proponent, and so is my group of the police department. We don't want any of them to be gone, if it means raising my taxes, so be it. Because what they have given us is security, safety, and the feeling of safety in the community. And I am one of those people that has a scanner, and that's part of my life after retirement, is listening to it. And if you have any idea what those police department, those guys are going through day and night, you can see the need that we need here. And we feel safe, a lot safer, a lot better organized under the chief, doing a fantastic job. I'm very proud of him and what they're doing. And I know you don't want me back out there on the streets. I spend thirty-three thousand dollars a year chasing drug dealers. And you don't want me out there. I'm tired, I'm old, just had a birthday march the first, and I can't see good. So, that means I need a bigger gun. My point to you is, you don't want me out there. We don't want to be doing that again. We, I, we are in total support of the police department and what they're doing. And I say, the chief's done a fantastic job, taking guns off the street, arresting people, doing what he's supposed to be doing. And that's an honor and a privilege to see him in our neighborhoods and in the area all the time. We do not want to go back to the way it was. Do not. So, I implore you to please keep the policeman you got.
Thank you.
I also have a letter from my neighborhood organization to support.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Nan Grove from thirty-seven, thirty-eight West Ninth Street. And I have a question, and I probably should have been able to find the answer. I apologize, I can't. Did the police department or the dispatching department this year add the money for interpreter services so that if some of our citizens who are non-English speakers can in fact get their emergency services in a timely manner?
I don't know who the right person to answer that is. Dan, maybe? I don't, I don't know. Yeah, please do.
Deanna Trelka, Director of Safety Services. We didn't increase it, but I don't believe it's been decreased. We have the same amount we've always had. We've faced more challenges now with the Burmese population, but we've found assistance through different entities to address those as well.
So, we do have a budget to address the foreign speaking people, and we do use those?
Yes, sir.
And that budget, as far as you know, has not been increased? Do you know, Michelle, if that line would have been increased? I don't, I don't even know where it is in the budget.
I think she might be asking about dispatch, which I don't know.
Okay. Okay. And there's, there's, there's different entities, as you know. You know, there's Black Hawk County and the jail system, and then there's the dispatch system. I know we, 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 as in the city, the police department, does, do use interpreters, and we do have a budget for that.
Because dispatch is the point of entry for people to get their ambulance or the fire department or the police there, I do believe it's extremely important to be there. And please let me add one other consideration with that. The USCRI office, which was working with the refugees from Burma, was slated to close on last Friday. Because of the outpouring from this community in the newspapers, through petitions, through direct calls to people to USCRI, they said, gee, in our Arlington headquarters, we have not seen towns do this before. We appreciate it so much that we are going to provide bridge funding to help these folks until you get something locally started. And so, I would suggest to you, if you can make that kind of impression at that level, then I think you could do it with other funders, and if not through the city budget now, perhaps together we could work towards getting specifically funded dollars to make sure that there is phone interpretation, not just in Burmese and Karini and Karin and Chin, but also in all the other languages that are found here in the community.
Thanks, Hannah. Very much.
Randy here at five, or one eleven Highland Avenue. It's very obvious the city has a tough job in doing this. There's not a lot of money, and there's a lot of needs. And watching the city work with this is fascinating. There is another perspective, though. Just before I came down here tonight, I got a phone call from a family friend of ours. She's close to my age, she's retired, very bad physical condition. She owns a place here in the area, and she can't afford the increase in taxes. She tried last year to redo her, her financial situation by refinancing her house. She couldn't do it. She had a lot beside of it. She tried to sell that, she couldn't. She had to go bankrupt last year, so that reset everything. Now, this year coming up, she can be facing an increase, an increase in property tax. And when I say she can't afford it, she can. I, I realize the problems of the city, but there are a lot of people out there who simply don't have the money to make the extra payments. And I don't know how you're going to consider this in your deliberations, but I think it's important that you consider, I'd like to see a zero increase, but I don't think that's going to happen, the smallest increase that you can possibly do.
Thank you, Randy.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I have observed several articles in the paper, and as the lady proposed that we always talk about fire and police that are the first ones to get indicated they're going to get cut. Is there anything else in the budget, such as secretaries, maintenance people, whatever, that, that are not needed? Have we ever looked into that? You know, support people are important, but at the same time, do we need the number that are there? Please look into that. The taxes, I, I'm looking at my tax bill. I, I moved here in oh nine, didn't have to pay taxes for that first period, but they've gone up a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars every time. They're going to go up another two point seven five percent, maybe, maybe more than that. You know, and I retired this year, so now I'm one of those fixed income people, and I'm digging into my savings to pay, to, to retire, first off. It cost me a lot of money that I didn't expect it to have to cost. It just, it seems like we keep piling on, and, and we're talking in the, in the projection up there, lower taxes, but yet we're going to ask, a tax ask, you know, forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and change, or forty-one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand and fifty-nine dollars. That doesn't resonate to me that you're going to want to lower taxes, but yet you're going to increase my taxes? Wow. It, it just, you keep piling on. Utilities are going to go up two point seven five percent, or have gone, and they're, they're going to go up again next year and the next year, again. Fixed income? How do I handle that?
Steve Murphy, one twenty-four Terrace Drive. So, I guess I look for a couple different behaviors. The first is, is there a skill set to cut these taxes? We talked about so much from the income side. You know, I'd like to see the whole taxes presented on the expense side. We've come to the mayor and city council with ideas to, to cut taxes, and I'll call it all taxes, including the utility tax, which I was surprised to find out the utility fee is carried on your books. which I was surprised to find out the utility fee is carried on your books as a tax. So I think we can rest that, that it's a utility tax. We already given you an extra three percent. We're not talking about that three percent because it was voted a year ago. But we've already given quite a bit. So I guess I don't mind another tax increase. I mean, it's kind of, I think it's an accomplished feat here. What I'm looking for is, is there a skill set to manage this next year? Or the year after? Or the year after? And what, that's what I'm missing. When ideas come from the citizens on ways to save money that we're paying in, they don't go anywhere. Feels like they're going to go somewhere, but when the rubber hits the road, where'd we go? Well, we're not doing anything with that. So I guess what I'm looking for is, let's have the conversation year round like a good business does. And let's look at it from the expense side, not the revenue side. Let's manage the expenses on a, on an every week, every month basis. Great businesses know where they sit. And just because it's not budget time and a good idea comes up to save cash, we should look at that. I think if, if people would have gone back and had a chance to vote at all this at the same time, you want to go into deeper debt for the, for a better, a different dog, you know, animal control service? I don't know. Let's have all that at the same time and say, all in? We probably can't afford what we've done. So I guess what I'm asking for is, no matter what happens this year, a different attitude going forward when it comes to the ways to save the citizens' taxes, fees, call it what you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. Do we base the police department on our population? I think we went from, what, eighty-five thousand down to sixty-eight thousand people? And I sure don't want Leon back out there, he's dangerous, so. Is that how we base the, how many people we got in the police department?
No, it's not, Jim.
We don't? What do we base it on?
Well, it's history and past practice. And what we feel is safe to put out on the street at any given time is probably the biggest driver.
You mean even though our population went from eighty-five to sixty-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. We all have someone who's going to be strongly affected by these increases. The lady I'm talking about lost her husband this year. Her property probably stayed the same, I haven't seen it. So she's going to be facing the seven point two-seven percent increase on her taxes. She hasn't been to her tax man yet, she doesn't know if she's going to be able to stay in her home. Utilities fee, you added there, she's going to have to pay the utilities fee. Mid-America just raised the rates, so she's going to pay even more. Water usage, if she's one that's afraid that she's going to freeze up her water main, she's using more water, going to pay more water, more sewer. All of these things add to the burden of many people in Waterloo. You know, before the first year, when you gave out the non-bargaining raises, I thought, hey, we must be in pretty good shape, because we gave a four point eight percent pay increase to those folks. And I'll use the hundred thousand dollar figure like you do on homes. Those folks who make a hundred thousand dollars got a forty-eight hundred dollar increase. Now that is a lot of money. A lot of these people are probably trying to live on not much more than that. You know, there's, there's ways that you can get some relief for us tax people. Number one is cut that rate down to a bare minimum. Maybe, maybe reduce some people someplace. But we just, those people can't afford that. And there's many, many of them. I'm sure you can all look around your neighborhood or at your relatives and friends and see those people. Need to somehow reduce that tax burden. You can start using some gaming money. We were promised when we took the vote, tax relief. Now, you folks believe that tax relief is, like I tell my wife, we've got to save some money this month there, we're, we're just spending too much. And she comes home with a car full of stuff, and she said, I saved a thousand dollars. It was all fifty percent off. That's kind of where you're, you folks do that. You make a down payment on a sports complex, you put five or six million dollars of taxpayer dollars buying property, tearing them down, take them off the tax rolls. It just goes on and on. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
My name is Gail Schinkel, and I'm here representing the Board of Realtors. And we've heard the three percent increase on your Mid-America for Waterloo. And we see that you're going to raise the taxes this year in other ways, too. And I hear a lot of, well, why aren't people coming into Waterloo? You're kind of pricing them out with taxes. You, you have competing cities that have lower taxes. And when you have, you, you raise the taxes this month, that, you know, they look at that. Their interest rate's low, but their taxes continue to go up. They don't like it, and they're not coming. Your schools, I don't think, are the big problem, because their scores, a lot of the schools have the same scores as Waterloo. I mean Cedar Falls, I'm sorry. But your taxes, when we bring somebody in to the area and they look at the taxes, they go, how come so much more? And we just have to say it's budgeted. There's different budgets. But I think you need to look at that. The values of properties are not going down. I think that you reassess and you move the properties down. But property values are not going down in other places. They're actually going up. But you need to, you need to be able to sell a home in Waterloo. You need to, they need to compare for everything. And here's the thing, in Cedar Falls, we have no properties at a hundred thousand or even a hundred and twenty thousand, very, very low. But when they come over here and they have to pay three hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollars more in taxes, they can't afford the houses either. So just as these older people can't afford the houses, you're, you're telling the younger people, they can't afford them either because of the taxes. So I think you, you know, it needs to be relooked at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail.
My name is Marty, take you one-seventeen Derbyshire Road. I really hate to see fire and police cut. And I mentioned a couple weeks ago about getting into the TIF money, and I've got some information on that, but I also hate to see the cost of living in Waterloo go up. And I've read some data about the ownership cost of Waterloo in comparison to Cedar Falls and Evansdale. And this is, you go through the Blackaw County Assessor's process and run these numbers. If you think a sixty thousand dollar house are a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand dollars, and sixty thousand fits in many wards in Waterloo, the cost of those houses are twenty-five percent more in taxes, actually about twenty-six percent more in Waterloo than in Cedar Falls. So if you have a sixty thousand dollar house in Waterloo or in Cedar Falls, you're paying twenty-five, twenty-six percent more in taxes. Now, if, if you take and look at the history of, like, say, say a two hundred thousand dollar house, you have a lot of deer folks that come in that they're only going to be here three to five years. And we all know that a lot of deer people go in Cedar Falls. And if you start looking at the cost of ownership on a two hundred thousand dollar house, they're going to pay twenty-five percent more property taxes in Waterloo, that's kind of a no-brainer, they're going to go Cedar Falls, because also the appreciation of the house is probably going to be a little bit better in Cedar Falls. If you look at Evansdale, you can buy a two hundred, it's like thirty-eight percent less in taxes in Evansdale, comparing Evansdale to Waterloo is maybe an extreme. So if you look at the cost of ownership, it's more costly than in Waterloo. And, and these taxes are regressive. As mentioned earlier, the folks that can't afford it, you know, it's more costly. It's like gas tax. Someone making a hundred thousand a year fills up their tank the same amount of time versus someone that makes thirty thousand a year, and in a year, your taxes are higher. It's a higher base. It's a higher percentage. Well, I mentioned the TIFs some other time ago. And, and we need the TIFs so that we can broaden the tax base and then keep adding jobs to Waterloo, right? I think you guys have done a really great job on that. The only problem I see is, some of our TIFs have been since nineteen seventy-six, nineteen ninety, and I mentioned, taking some of the incremental tax off the TIFs and paying for city expenses. If we, if someone in here had investments since nineteen seventy-six or nineteen ninety, you'd be upset if it wasn't paying you a better, a better return in your pocket as far as lowering your expenses. Now, one of the things is that I don't know how many jobs a business has been at since two thousand. Does anyone have that number? How many businesses, jobs because of TIF? Well, we know there's some been added. We know. So as an example, one thing for sure, TIF has not, the increase in jobs and, and businesses have not increased the population. In fact, population's gone down since two thousand. And if you look at the US Census Bureau, and if you look at our neighboring cities as an example, these are all up, and I'll tell you which one's negative. Cedar Falls has gone up seven point nine-three percent. Dunkerton, twelve percent. Elk Run, five percent, five point eight-two. Evansdale, four point seven-four. Gilreville, it's gone down seven point seven-two. I don't know what the folks are doing there, but it's gone down. Hudson, nine point eight percent. Janesville, ten point eight-six. Jessup, twelve point two-two. La Porte, zero point four-four. You need to do some work on La Porte. Get that thing up here. Raymond, thirty-one point eight-five percent. That's increases. Now, if you look at Waterloo with the census from, from two thousand, two thousand and ten, it went down a half a percent, but from, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, it went down three point one, one. So it's about three point six percent increase. So we're going down, all the communities around us are going up. We're putting money into TIFs to bring jobs in, broaden the tax base. Each year you struggle with expenses, cost of living goes up, but you're still putting money into the TIFs. I, I understand they got to pay the debt, I understand that. But if you look at the, who's getting the jobs? Apparently, it's not citizens of Waterloo, it's commuters. So at any rate, that was a pretty good lead in that I had and information, but... So if we look five, ten, fifteen years down the road, say, say ten, five, three years, if past performance is an indication of future performance, then you can, you can predict that our, our population will be stagnant, go down. The expense of living in Waterloo will go up, and the surrounding communities will gain population. Oh, there's one other thing I was going to add. If you take the Blackaw County and subtract out Cedar Falls and Waterloo in population to the county, the county went up two point three-five percent. So, you know, you're increasing jobs in businesses, but it's not increasing the population. So anyway, thank you.
Marty, thank you. Good numbers.
Good evening. Colleen Tierney, nineteen thirty-three Wembley Road. I'm a real estate agent also. I was up here about three years ago, and we were talking about the increase in taxes back then, and I said people will be leaving. And that was a great segue into people are leaving. People are leaving because of what Gail said, too. The taxes are going up. I know, I mean, hey, I appreciate police, firemen, any service military. I appreciate what they do. But the drop is kind of like saying you have a, a job, a company that has a hundred thousand employees, and you're going to keep the same staff when you cut it down to eighty. That doesn't make sense for any business, so cutting is normal. What I wanted to also touch on is, I pulled up some stuff at the office today. And I went to Tax Calculator on the Assessor's website, the Iowa Assessor's website, and I pulled up a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. And I pulled up Cedar Falls, the taxes on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home in Cedar Falls, twenty-four hundred. The taxes in Hudson, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, twenty-five hundred. Taxes in Waterloo on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is thirty-one hundred. Okay? And you're increasing them, plus we have that three percent Mid-American energy. And our neighborhoods, thank you, Gail, for saying they're going up, but I don't believe they are. I sell about thirty-five homes average a year in the last fifteen years. We're still hard struggling with that two thousand five, two thousand six, when they had that eight thousand dollar incentive that drove up prices. And there's some people still upside down. So I'm, I'm just seeing that we need, we're going to turn into Detroit. We are having Waterloo flight, big time. And it's companies come here, and they already have the mindset, they're not moving here. So what I did today is I drove over to the new sports facility. It's impressive. It's very impressive. And there was nobody there. I want to say Planet Fitness just opened, they have six thousand. We have a thousand, is what I was told on the tour. And they said that's about halfway to our goal. Our goal's two thousand? It's a great facility, but it's as big as a high school. And I just thought that seemed crazy. I, I pulled up the Y expenses, and it's hurting competition with the Y, other places that have been around. But it is, it's lovely. The other thing I pulled up, and I'll pass this around, is I pulled up just what the taxes. I, I pulled up Waterloo downtown housing. And we do separate Waterloo into different categories, Cedar Falls also. But the new houses that are being built, and we're talking over by Lafayette, some of the ones John Ruff is doing and some of the other grant projects. The average, this is without the new homes in it, this is active on the market, and I pulled up the last two years. The average price is forty-seven thousand on a house in the downtown area. Now, that's just the active, and there's only two active. Now, we did solds in the last two years. The average sold price is thirty-three thousand. It's the price of the homes that sell in the downtown area. And that's a lot of area. Now, I put in with those new homes that are selling at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and John had some about the same price, I believe. That average only went up to seventy-four thousand. That was adding a hundred and, well, a hundred and twenty, twenty-two thousand. Adding a lot of homes in that price range. So I appreciate that we're trying to clean up this town, but we need to have responsibility family-wise. I mean, quit landing on the cops and the fire department. I mean, I know we, we all appreciate them, but hey, I grew up here. We used to have helpful neighbors that would run and help people. We can get there a lot faster, you know? And what happened to people being accountable? We can't help tearing down all these properties, losing tax base, and then burdening the rest of us. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. I want to grow this town, and I want to, and I love this community. I'm still here. But it makes me wonder sometimes why. Thanks.
Thanks, Colleen.
Kamaire, five-twenty-six Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. First of all, I'd like to say I agree with Leon. Leon and I go back many, 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 many years. We both worked for the same company, and we both experienced the same thing. It's always amazing to me that the first thing that comes out is police and firemen. And as everybody will talk about right here, that's one of the most critical things. That, that should be the last place that you're looking, is the police and the fire department. Leon would also will attest to this. We both spent thirty-plus years in an organization that today is making record profits. You've all read about them in the newspaper. Do you know why they're making record profits? Because they're doing more with less. More with less. Leon and I also worked under the same merit pay system, that's how we got paid. And it got paid on results. The kind of a raise I got was based on my budget primarily. Could I save money? I look around this room here, and you obviously got some very intelligent people working here, and you're paying them good money. One of their jobs is to save you money. They're hired from the top of their head to the bottom of their feet. One of the jobs, it's an unwritten thing, is save you money. What can we do better, faster, easier, quicker, and with less people? That's the name of the game today. We've both been through it. We've both seen Black Fridays where people come in to find out they didn't have a job. Why? They didn't ask them, they eliminated them. The work didn't go away, the people that were left absorbed the work. The work didn't go away, the people that were left absorbed the work. You, you don't look at the police and the fire department to begin with, that's the last place you look, because we all know that that's one of the most crucial things. You need to charge your staff right tomorrow after you pass this budget, whatever you do. Next year, you will reduce your budget by five percent. Leon and I so, also experienced this. We had to go through a time, one time when John Deere was hard up, hard up, and we were told, make out your budget, scrutinize that budget, get it down to the last penny, and we sent it upstairs. Two days later, it came back down, you'll tell ya, they cut it by ten percent. Your budget's cut ten percent, now how do you wanna allocate your money? I'm sorry, folks, you gotta, you gotta step up to the plate and take a hard line. You are, you're the boss. You are it. You are our savior. You're between us and, and that, that bill up there. And the bottom line to this thing is, work smarter, not harder, it's easier.
Thanks, Bill. Is there anyone else right now? Good comments. Is there anybody else right now? Marty, quickly, please, if you just, uh, then we're, then we're gonna move to council.
I just wanted to add what Bill was saying. Deere in the nineties went through a two-tier system. It, we were told, if we didn't go through a two-tier system, Assembly would be leaving. And then, um, along with one of your more favorite guys that I worked with, Reggie, okay, I smiled, thought I'd get a smile on that, Reggie Schmidt, we were part of the group that actually changed the pay system from the standard hour plan to continuous improvement plan. So what happened was, the way that Deere made these changes was, uh, they changed the pay system, went to a two-tier system. We had guys working right beside each other, making ten, fifteen dollars more an hour, which wasn't very much fun to, to deal with. We didn't particularly like it, but, but anyway, that's some of the things that Bill was, was talking about that. Um, and we also had, when our budgets would come out, when I was a young supervisor, you went line item by line item. If you were over your budget, that'd count by ten percent, or under by ten percent, you had to explain it. So, at any rate.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you all very much for your comments. Counsel, uh, Mr. Hart, please.
Can you make comments? Should we close the hearing?
Uh, uh, no, let's, let's make, I'm sorry?
Counsel's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, uh, counsel, time for counsel comments, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's, let's do that, and then somebody's gonna have to make a motion. Okay, Mr. Hart?
You said counsel comments now?
Let's, let's have counsel comments.
So we keep the hearing open?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper.
I'll go first.
Okay.
This is my thirteenth budget with the city, and I've had, um, all kinds of advice from our citizens, which I appreciate. The, uh, people have said to me, why don't you reduce the golf courses? Uh, and I'd say, what, how often you golf? Well, I don't golf. Why don't you shorten the hours of the library? Well, how often you use the library? Well, I've never been in the building. If they don't use the service, they really don't care about the service, but there are people out there who do. Today, I had a, a phone call from a gentleman, it was a very nice conversation. He was calling in regards to his parents who were on a fixed income. They're retired and are questioning another rise in, in taxes. And he said that, they said they don't use the police and fire department, so there was no reason to have so many. Well, obviously, they've not been in a car accident, or had drug dealing in their neighborhood, or suffered a heart attack yet, but when they see those guys in uniform, that few extra dollars that they paid, they're certainly gonna appreciate. Uh, I've been hearing comments today in regards to Cedar Falls being so much cheaper place to live than Waterloo in regards to taxes, and we understand that. Uh, I made a phone call today to talk to the people of the city of Cedar Falls and asked them, what do you receive in regards from the state of Iowa for, um, fire protection for the University of Northern Iowa? They get five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars from the state. If we were getting that money here, we wouldn't be having this conversation. That's eight employees. So you can see the difference, why things are different in Cedar Falls than they are here. I believe they also received money from CFU and also the hospital. I didn't, I didn't inquire about that. But, um, you can't compare apples to oranges and end up with the, with the same answer. So, I have to say that when the cops grant became available, the cops grant came because it was to help re, uh, reestablish the staffing of police departments all over the country. When it came to us, um, Reggie Schmidt, I, one of your gentlemen mentioned Reggie, Reggie and I felt that we could not afford five officers. We agreed that maybe we could afford three. We were outvoted. Mayor Hurley, uh, tried to veto it, also to reduce it to three, and, um, it, his veto didn't hold. So I remember Reggie and I saying that, okay, it's out of our hands, we were outvoted, the rest of you wanted it, you figure out how you're gonna pay for it. And, and I agree with, with, um, Mr. Mosley. I've been in the situation where neighborhoods where we've had drug dealers and gangs and whatnot. I don't wanna go back there. We finally got to the staffing level of our police department where we should be. I do not wanna start going backwards. When you look at your tax levy, three and a quarter cents it costs to hire a police officer. I cannot go back on three and a quarter cents for, for, for an officer or firefighter.
Thanks, Mr. Welper. Next? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Um, in a resting process, uh, the last few weeks, um, but I wanna give credit to where credit is due. I wanna thank, uh, Michelle. Um, I think this year, with the various options that she's provided to the city, um, her response time, uh, for getting back to us, um, with, with, uh, questions, um, thank you also for, um, the, your, your, um, leadership in providing us with a, um, what I believe a pretty decent, um, budget proposal, and all the city departments for all of your diligence. Thanks very much. And I, I wanna give a special shout-out to Tim Jamison, because...
Don't get carried away now.
Because that Courier article made sure that I didn't get any sleep this weekend. But, but, but the fact of the matter is, um, what it did do, uh, it gave, it gave, uh, gave me an opportunity to probably talk to more people this weekend in regards to where they stand at, um, from the possible not-filling positions to how it's going to impact someone's department, to, um, the, the lady that can't afford the, the increases as proposed, but it gave me an opportunity to talk to, to a, a wide variety of people. And it, it, it also showed me that people actually do care. You know, oftentimes, um, when we deal in scenarios, we deal in absolutes, uh, doom and gloom, you know? Uh, we're going to fold. Um, but I, I first wanna say that I believe, uh, with the staffing we had, the various departments, and the leadership of this council, that the, the, the city is strong and poised to, to continue to go on in a good direction, to, to improve the quality of life for our citizens. So I, 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 I just have to say that, because we get in these situations, and it's like there's no hope. I'm like, I'm almost down myself, but there, there is hope. Uh, the city has good, it's good to have competing arguments. But, um, Mr. Mosley, who is a person who, who I know, I probably wouldn't even be here if it weren't for people, um, like him that have paved the way and been people as such that when there is a call for response, um, he's been a person of support and action. But on Thursday, I wasn't able to really give a commitment either way, because listening to the council and the, the different perspectives, um, I was wondering if there was a middle ground in which from, from, uh, impacting services the least that we can, to, um, continuing, uh, to making changes for the overall future of the city, was there a middle ground that we could possibly meet at? So, um, with all of that said, um, I would like to, uh, make a proposal, and it may not be as sexy as what, you know, everyone wants, but it is a proposal that, um, I believe, uh, takes into account some of the conversations that I've heard people give over the last several weeks. Michelle, I don't know if you, you had, um, prepared anything, but my proposal would be to start at Mayor Clark's proposal of the...
Just before you get too far, do we need to close the hearing and, and make a, and then let Quentin make this motion?
Only if he's making a motion past the resolution, if he's just throwing out there for discussion with the council.
I don't...
What his proposal's going to include, he doesn't need, we don't need to close it yet, so it depends what he's about to do.
Okay.
Cause I, I think I may have, I may list some items, and then there may be some further discussion from other council people.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Quentin, go ahead, please.
And, Michelle, did you have anything or, okay?
It said, um, uh, it would, to start with Mayor Clark's proposal of, uh, in the option and, and what we actually have been, uh, presented with, and to try to reduce, uh, reduce the tax askings, uh, by five hundred eleven thousand and seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, that would bring, uh, the levy rate to seventeen point nine nine, which is under eighteen, which is a number that I've heard as a target, uh, by a council person. Um, it would increase for residential property or, uh, 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 four percent reevaluation, that would be moved down from two point nine eight to one point seven one. And for those that, uh, had no reevaluation, which I think that number was currently at, um...
Seven point seven.
Seven point seven. It would move that number to five point nine five. And the way that I propose to do that, uh, is to, we have, uh, to not fill two police positions, um, that are currently, I believe, up for retirement. Please correct my language if I'm, if I'm wrong. And that would be a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and six dollars, um, savings. Also to not fill two fire positions, would, which, which would bring one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, to reduce, uh, police travel, um, by ten thousand, reduce police, police uniforms on a two-year average of nine thousand dollars, to reduce employee benefit reimbursement, uh, of six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, to reduce fire health services, uh, two thousand dollars, to reduce fire training increase, uh, to reduce fire training by three thousand, to reduce the library budget, five thousand, reduce the youth pavilion budget by twenty-five hundred dollars, and for redo, to reduce liability insurance premium budgets and work comp insurance premium budgets both by twenty-five thousand dollars. Also propose to use one hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, which will equal a total of five hundred eleven thousand and seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that would be the, uh, proposal that I would, uh, ask for the council, uh, to support. Um, it is, it is, as I mentioned, maybe not as sexy as where everyone else is, um, working from, but from hearing conversations from all six council members about where they would like to be, and trying to find a place within that area that we can find some middle ground.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Uh, the hearing is now, or excuse me, is still open, uh, council, so, uh, Mr. Hart has, has, I think, made a proposal that I'm gonna call the, uh, just for lack of a better word, the Quentin proposal. So when we do clo, well, I mean, we have to call it, maybe, um, if we have a number or something, but when we close, when we close the hearing, somebody's gonna have to make a motion, uh, to approve a budget. The budget that's on the council, that's on the agenda, is the one that I proposed. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we're first gonna have to have comments, then close the hearing, and then propose a budget, Mr. Morrison.
Well, um, I just wanted to read something I had, uh, thought about this for a long time, and I've, uh, there's Steve Schmidt smiling again, but I expect that from me, Steve. Um, this is the first time that, that I've gone through this process, and first as a representative of the people, I realize that, uh, budget approval is a main decision made by somebody on council. Uh, choosing provisions for and maintenance of quality public services is paramount. Uh, all of us Waterlooans pay for these, uh, that's part of being community, and I'm proud of our community. I want it to grow, I want it to be inviting, and I want it to move forward, not backward. Uh, what are some of the services that we provide ourselves and our welcome visitors who come into our town? And we do so with our money. Uh, library, streets, sanitation, parks, recreation, police, animal control, traffic, human rights, fire, ambulance, lighting, forestry, central garage, finance, building inspection and demolition, culture, arts, uh, city and economic planning, engineering, information technology, and basically overall structure. And this listing, I'm not meaning it to be all-inclusive. And I understand that now's the time that we have to decide how we're gonna pay for our, what I believe are second-to-none services in Iowa. Uh, I'm that proud of Waterloo, and I don't want that to be diminished at all. Uh, through the last three weeks, we'd have these open meetings, and they were held, um, after, uh, Mayor Clark got a baseline, uh, proposal, plus any believed necessary request from the department heads. We learned that assessed property values were going down an average of four percent on fifty-five percent of the residential properties, and staying the same on thirty-nine percent, while remaining six percent saw an increase. We learned that the residential rollback was going from fifty-two percent to fifty-four percent, and commercial business rollback was going down five percent. Mayor Clark's initial proposal had a five point nine two percent increase for those fifty-five percent, and ten point three four for the thirty-nine percent. The meetings that we had resulted in Mayor Clark's proposal going down to two point nine eight percent, or about seven point, or about seven and a half cents a day increase for the fifty-five percent, and the seven point two seven percent, or about, uh, eighteen cents a day for the, uh, thirty-nine percent of those where they stayed the same. Also, the levy rate was gonna go to eighteen point two one eight eight eight, which would be the fifth lowest in the last fifteen years. Tax askings would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars less than fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. These further reductions would be done without losing any of our public safety manpower or a diminution of our services. While any number of us, including me, would like to see no additional cost increases, the stark reality of the situation is that there are cost increases seemingly for everything, groceries, clothing, entertainment, gas, and energy. So also it is with our, providing ourselves with our public services, that we, uh, don't want them just to be ones that we can live with, but we want those public services to be ones where there's no doubts about, and which we're to be proud. Uh, on a few occasions, the council has been told a story of a fabled Mary Smith on any avenue facing any tax increase, and the council knows that story. What wasn't included in this fable is how Mary suffered the consequent, or would suffer the consequences, and what kind of consequences she would suffer for a fire truck being a minute too late, or a police officer unable to patrol as frequently because we have not passed a budget maintaining our public safety. This is irresponsible, and to me, an uncalled-for risk that we all need to avoid. With that and more, I speak in favor of the budget, as I had seen it to this point, that the mayor had proposed. Uh, before ending, I believe something different, which people don't address here, and that is that I would hope that the city of Waterloo and the city council would pass a resolution requiring livable wages to all workers doing business with and for the city of Waterloo, and seeking the same from all private businesses. That would be a giant step for our community, as well as a... That would be a giant step for our community, as well as a resultant increase in revenues for our city. I ask other members of the council to not only endorse this concept, but also take action as a way to improve our working neighbor situations, and in so doing, our city's future budgets. Thanks.
Mr. Morrison, thank you very much. Are there other further comments, Mr. Schmidt?
You know, I, I appreciate what Leon said, and I appreciate the letter from the Gates Park Neighborhood Association, but as the, one of the at-large council members, I get around to all, I'm sorry, I get around to all the neighborhood associations that meet on a regular basis, and, you know, Waterloo has a significant number of low and moderate income folks that are living on a pension, living on social security. As I get around to those neighborhood association meetings, what I hear is people now are getting to the point of having to choose between putting food on the table, buying their medicine, or paying their property taxes. And we've heard this winter with the frozen pipe issues we've had, we have a significant number of people that cannot even afford to pay a plumber to come out and figure out what to do about their frozen pipes. And those are probably the people that are gonna end up getting the seven percent tax increase, and I just think there are those folks that cannot afford that, and I've had calls over the weekend from those folks saying we're just gonna price them out of their homes, and that's similar to what some of the, the real estate folks said. You know, the government at all levels, if we start at the federal government, they are talking about downsizing our military to prior to World War II levels. Now, they're not doing that because they're anti-defense, they're doing that because of the reality of what's been going on with our economy for the last number of years. Our state government has downsized, they've had layoffs, they've had furloughs, they've had pay freezes, pay cuts. Same thing has happened across the street at the county, they recently laid off ten employees and discontinued a program. They're not doing that because they enjoy doing that, they're doing that because they know what's going on in people's budgets, and they also see what's coming. And right now, what's coming does not appear to be positive, but it seems like we're gonna be dealing with this for at least another couple of years, so they're trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve. You know, they've done the same thing at Hawkeye Community College, they've done it over at U N I. And I just think that we're not being responsible by trying to deal with this, we have this golden opportunity right now of being able to right-size our employee base without having to go through any layoffs. For those of us that have been on the council for a while, normally at these budget hearings, we have a significant number of our city employees, not department heads, but, but the other employees here, because there's always that threat of layoffs. And for the first time that I can remember in the six years I've been on the council, we have an opportunity here to adjust our, our size without having to lay anybody off, without having to put anybody out on the street, without having to, to pay any unemployment, and I just think we really need to take advantage of that. I think I've said this just about every year I've been on the council, but next year, I believe is gonna be an even tougher year to deal with the budget than this year, with some of the things we've got coming with the pensions and a variety of different things. During those budget hearings, we heard from a number of our department heads how, based on some of these proposed reductions that we talked about, and again, Leon, we're gonna end up, just, I wanna make sure you're aware of this, we're gonna end up with more police if we would do the, the recommendations some of us are, are supporting, more police than what we had before we did the grant. I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. And we've had conversations with some of our department heads that said, it wouldn't be easy to deal with these reductions in staff, but we could do this, we could do that, and I think that's what our, our department heads are tasked with. I think they're a highly educated, highly trained, highly talented group, and I think we should allow them, by giving them some adjusted numbers, to be able to make those changes, and I think that we could do that, and I don't think, I don't think the world's gonna come apart, and I don't think we're gonna turn back into tombstone. You know, that grant money, I know, I personally, and I'm not sure about the other four council members that voted to override Mayor Hurley's veto, but I looked at that as that's a grant, that was a, a three- or a four-year deal, we were gonna take advantage of that, but I never thought that we would stay at a hundred and twenty-five, and, and I don't know that that was anybody else's plan either. And then the only other thing I, I would like to do, because we talk about this kind of in nebulous terms, but I did print off, and this is from the city of Cedar Rapids budget proposal that's online, that kinda compares the top ten cities in the state and their tax rate. And this, this goes back to, I believe it was Councilman Lynn talking about that magic number of getting below eighteen percent on the levy, that, you know, this just shows, these are the kind of things our competitors, these are the kind of things that the city of Dubuque, the city of Cedar Rapids, the city of Iowa City, that they use to compete against us. Doesn't have Cedar Falls on here, so Cedar Falls is not part of this conversation, but these are the other major cities, metropolitan cities, that we compete against, and this just shows how year after year after year, we're in a league all by ourselves. The one year we weren't was the year we did the utility fee, tax, whatever you call it, and that would have been roughly a six percent tax increase if it had been in property taxes. So I think this is a golden opportunity, I think we need to take advantage of it, and we can do it with virtually no harm, no foul to any of our employees, and I think that's the, the prudent and responsible thing to do. I think to continue to do what we're doing is unsustainable, and I think it's up to us to make that tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Are there any further, just general comments? Mr. Lynn?
I'd like to make a quick, I was gonna make a long comment. I've been working with numbers like everybody else has. Mr. Hart, I compliment you.
Give us the mic.
I compliment you on the hard work you're doing. You know, when I started on the council, I talked to a lot of people, and everybody always said, everything's salary and benefits, and we can't cut those. I think we won't cut those, is what we ought to look at it. We have to cut those. The budget is not sustainable, we can't spend two million dollars every year for five years. Michelle gave us a handout the other day that showed us in five years, personnel costs would be up seven million dollars. We, we just can't do it. I agree with Steve, this is a golden opportunity. No layoffs, it accomplishes what I think most of us want to accomplish, and it's a bold and decisive action, and that's what we were elected to do.
Thank you, Tom.
For the directness and the shortness.
Directly.
And Mayor.
Who spoke? Mr. Jones, yes.
Yes, I will, I will try to be brief, as I was not last time I spoke.
Make sure you spoke into the, into the microphone.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, so the budget as proposed shows that fifty-five percent of our, of our taxpayers would pay two point nine eight percent, which is reasonable, except for the fact that these homeowners, this fifty-five percent of the homeowners in this city, are seeing four percent of the value of their homes evaporate. You know, one of the biggest investments in their lives is evaporating, so the value of their homes are evaporating, we're adding almost three percent to, to that group. The other thirty-nine percent that had no decrease, which is good, I'm not in that, in that group unfortunately, 'cause I did see a decrease as well, could be seeing an increase of seven point two seven percent. That's, that's large, very large. I mean, that's, that's very significant. And then the remaining six percent are even higher than that. I mean, we don't even know what that is, I mean, that's incredible for, for some of these taxpayers. So, you know, and through a lot of this discussion, you know, we've talked about pennies and what it costs per day, and, you know, if we, if we reduce anything by pennies a day, by, by homeowner, it makes every amount seem insignificant, but the amounts we're talking about aren't insignificant, they, they mean a lot, and, you know, the cost of our city government is one of the highest in the entire state, and that, that's not a good, sustainable position for us. It really isn't, when we've got neighbors in, in Cedar Falls where, you know, their, their city tax rate is, is less than fifty percent of ours. I mean, this is not a good, sustainable situation for us. So, I mean, they're growing much faster than we are, if you look at our population since two thousand and five, we're, we're pretty flat. Cedar Falls has grown ten percent over that time. They've got more residential housing starts, by a significant amount, but on the other hand, we've got more business starts, which is good as well, so it's not, we're doing well, we're just not doing as well. So that's, that's an important item. Public safety, right? Do we have the right number of police officers? I don't know, right? But what we can do is we can look at the top or the most populated one hundred cities in this country, and kind of look at the police officers per capita of the hundred largest cities in this country. And Waterloo has basically a per capita amount of officers to citizens, of one officer to five hundred and forty-four people. Which, in the big scheme of things, forty-five out of the most populated cities in this country have less police officers per capita, some significantly. And we're talking about large cities like Boise, Idaho, on, on the low end at two hundred and five thousand people, to San Antonio, Texas, at one point four million. Some of them have significantly less police officers, so what is the right amount? I mean, it's really hard to tell, but it's kind of all over the board there. We talk about risk of firemen and the, the risk of response time. Sixty percent of our fire personnel live outside the city limits, and rely on much longer response times, and some even volunteer fire departments. So, you know, in a way, I think if it's good enough for them and their families, why isn't it good enough for our families? I mean, they know the risks, they live the risks every day. So these are just some of the things that, you know, I think we have to really look at and evaluate the risks. Yeah, if we had twice as many firemen, would, would we be twice as safe? I don't know. I mean, these are the risks that we have to evaluate and look at. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Welber?
If I may continue.
You may.
Thanks. Thing about police officers, the, the first place that, the first place that will reduce police officers would be in the school system. Right now, the, the school system pays for those officers to be there. This would be the place we'll probably pull, I'm not speaking out of turn here, Chief, this would be the place we'll pull them, and the schools pay for those officers. If we pull those, we're still gonna be in the schools, except now we're paying for them rather than, rather than the schools paying for the officer, so we don't gain anything, we actually lose. When you look at fire, they require X number of officers, or X, X number of firefighters at a fire, so we're still gonna have the same number of people, we're just gonna be paying overtime to have that same number of people there. Secondly, we have, we have an excellent fire department that has a response time of four minutes. If that changes, if that goes up, your house insurance goes up, 'cause that's what it's based on, is their response time by our fire department. So it looks rosy, just start eliminating the public safety, but there are consequences when you do this.
Thanks, Mr. Welber. And just, just a little bit of a comment, I, I, I don't know if, if two positions are reduced, where they would come from, where, it might be the school, but that would be up to the chief's discretion, obviously, to...
That's why.
Yeah. So, yeah, very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I was just gonna ask if we could make a motion to close.
I, I think Mr. Hart was getting ready to do...
Okay, I think, I think I started reading this motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, no, that's fine.
If we could then make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments?
Second. I would ask one more time, just to make sure there is no more comments from the council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I then would like to adopt a resolution approving said budget with a total tax levy rate, and I would like to make a change here of seventeen dollars and nine five one five eight cent, and a total property tax askings of forty million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Would you repeat those numbers, please?
Can you do the seven one zero?
Okay, I'm sorry, seventeen point nine five one five eight.
Thank you.
And then forty million, eight eighty-seven, seven hundred and ten thousand.
I second. Forty, eight eighty-seven, one zero.
Forty million, eight eighty-seven, seven one zero.
Okay, I would ask, with council's approval, if we can ask, is that one of the options that we have discussed?
That's close.
Okay.
Option five is forty million, eight eighty-seven, seven ten.
Okay, well, that's, that's what he just said.
Yep.
I, I can shed a little more light on, on that.
Okay.
So basically, it is option five with reducing the police positions, the three police positions of not filling those vacancies, or not filling those retirements, the, the same with the fire. It is not impacting the library, so adding those amounts back, so as not to impact the library. And it is not filling the leisure services downtown position, so not adding staff, but providing dollars for part-time to, to supplement existing staff on that. So those are really the differences in that, in that plan?
So the, the primary covenant of that is three police and three fire, though, the other ones are, are there, but the primary reduction is the three police.
It, it is, and it's, it's similar to what Mr. Hart has presented, except he's presented two, and this one is three.
It's three, okay.
Along the same lines.
There is a motion, and there is a second. Let's open the floor to comment to council at this point on the motion that's on the floor, which is, for lack of better use, I'm gonna refer option five, which is three police and three fire, not filling a leisure service position, and what was the other major one, David?
Adding back the library reduction.
Okay, okay. Comments on that before we vote on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
If I could just...
Speak, and they can't hear you.
I'm sorry. It's the first time you guys have ever said that to me. I would just like to extend incredible thanks to Michelle and her staff. Some of you who, some of you guys who sat in on the interminable budget sessions we had, and we had, ended up with ten, nine or ten options going in front of us, so there was a, a lot of information to digest, and I have gained even more respect tonight from my council colleagues, because we've managed to be, I thought, really intelligent, and also very civil, and people have made their arguments well, and have kind of left me confused, also something that I don't, that doesn't usually happen, but there has been some excellent, excellent discussion, and I appreciate that. So with that, I'm gonna shut up.
Thank you, Madam Cole. Are there further comments on the motion that's on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, again, I just wanna say, and I'm, I'm opposed to this resolution, if for no other reason than what it would do to public safety services. I can't say enough about what a hundred and twenty-five officers has meant for certain areas of town, especially the Church Row area, and I have to commend the police department. Having ridden or, or walked around and been with the fire department for several hours, I come to appreciate the fire department a lot, a lot more, and understanding what the workers are saying about their need to keep their staffing levels and increase those and fill those positions as they become vacant, is so important to the safety of the citizens of Waterloo. So for that reason, I'm totally against this resolution.
Okay. Let's, let's take a vote and see where we fall on the motion made by Mr. Schmidt. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
No.
Mr. Welber?
No.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. That was good discussion, council. This has been a long time coming to get to a point where it passed in one reading. I'm surprised, but it did, so congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Mayor, we still have nineteen.
We have one item on the amended agenda that we have to deal with, so Mr. Hart, would you take item nineteen on the amended agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve change order number one for a net increase in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for work performed by... amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for work performed by J and K Contracting of Ames, Iowa for the no-name Creek Interceptor Sewer Contract Number Eight Forty-Nine due to unforeseen discovery of bedrock where contractor was going to bore and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this now? At all? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the, oops, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight to come in front of council. If anybody would like to speak to mayor or council now, it's a time to do so. Step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
John Turbin, seventeen fifteen, Robin Root. After sitting in, having the privilege of sitting with these ladies and gentlemen for the amount of time that takes to run through one of these budgets and listen to our leadership, that we've got, we've got excellent, excellent people. We've got, I just, I've been around a lot of people before, and this open-mindedness and doing politics is great. The problem I see is that I've been to a lot of these meetings, and the biggest thing is we listen to our real estate people. We've got some of the best in Waterloo right now, and we can't hear them. They keep telling us, "Keep your taxes down." We've got all these great leaders, they're not paid the highest in the state, but our taxes are. So that indicates to me that something's wrong, because none of the employees are overpaid, and none of the department heads are overpaid. We need to look further down the road and see what is the problem with Waterloo and why do we spend so much money? This not something's gonna be cured, it wasn't caused by you guys, or I don't know where, but something's wrong. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else?
I also would like to congratulate you people and thank you people, and, you know, I know there's people up here that don't like me to think that I'm anti-government. I really don't care, because I'm a citizen, and I feel that I have the right to come up here. But what I want you people to know is, whether I agree with you or whether I disagree with you, I respect you. I highly respect you, because I've also been in public office. I know what it's all about. There's a reason that there's seven of you up here. At any given night, there should be seven different opinions on a discussion, and you know what? I don't care whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I'll respect that, and I do respect it, and I thank you for serving this, this community. The one thing that I would like to ask you to do and think about is, now that you're done with this budget session, Michelle opened up to, with your mission statement of what you wanted for Waterloo. What I'd like to see you start working on immediately is, what are your goals for next year? This is gonna come up again next year. What are your goals? And when I say goals, I'm talking about numbers. What do you expect out of your staff to happen next year? Put numbers on it, so they know what they're looking at, and they got a whole year to work on it. What do you expect them to come up with next year? And I think it would be who you, there's no doubt, you've got some good people here, some intelligent people here, but give them the guidelines that they need to operate under. Don't wait till crash time. Give them those numbers right now and say, "Look, next year, here's what we're gonna be looking at. We wanna decrease this by X amount." Put that figure on there, but give them a year to work on it. I, I wasn't joking when I said, "Work smarter, not harder, it's easier." That's a fact. There's gotta be better ways of doing business than we're doing business today. We can't sustain keep raising taxes every year. We can't handle that. You know, I asked about the police and fire department, their pension fund. I don't want these people to work here for thirty years to find out that their pension is not there. You said it's fair, I'm taking your word for it. But those are the kind of things I'm talking about. I don't care what you promised these people, whether I agree or disagree with what you promised them already. You promised them that. Mr. Welber, I don't care if Cedar Falls is getting five hundred thousand or whatever it is for the state for that, to me, that's immaterial. That's something we've gotta face. We, I don't know if you read the paper, the Courier this week, but there was, in the Sunday paper there, there was an article by somebody from Cedar Falls, and it pretty much give the impression of what Cedar Falls has of Waterloo. That's the real world. That's what we're dealing with. It's a competitive game, and they're competing against us.
Thanks, Bill.
That's what it is.
Thank you, sir.
Think about it.
Thanks, Bill. Very much appreciated.
I like the three minutes.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.[1724.97]